Julie's having a little bit of trouble with her, her computer, so she might be phoning in. Well, let's see, we have Ryan, Carl, Rick, Tim, Gail and Denny. So we have six council members. I did.
Okay.
All right, there you go, Julie.
I don't know what I did. Okay.
Join the group.
Good job, Julie. And we can see Denny now.
Yes, I finally got it figured out.
Very good.
I was trying to limit the glare.
But yeah, there you go.
Hey Jim, I don't know if you saw the 21st meeting. I will maybe try to call in, we're going to be visiting Bobby and his family, so.
Nope, I did see that. All right, we do have all the council members present. I think we've heard from everyone. Rick, thumbs up if you hear us. And Ryan Wagner, a thumbs up. All right, so we are, Tim, if you want to go ahead and start, I'd recommend it.
Time is at six o'clock, right on the nose. So we'll start the village council work session for tonight, Monday, December 7th, and we'll call the meeting to order. We're going to say, say the pledge of allegiance, there we go.
Yep, you still have.
I didn't know for a work session, we're going to do it, so.
Yeah, pledge, same, same start.
I'm going to click along pretty good at that tone for the. Ready?
Ryan, you and I are on, we are on together.
He was hanging. Well, we'll take a moment here just to gather our thoughts. There's a lot of things going on, a lot of people that I've heard of, that COVID's hitting. Hitting closer to home now than it ever has in the past, so take a minute and Jim, we'll take a roll call when you are ready.
For the roll call trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here.
Okay. And Mandy, I'm going to turn the host over to you. If I don't see any citizens on our call, Mr. Frisbee. Well, we do have Jackie, it has, is on. Jackie, put a hand up if you have anything to say.
Sorry, guys, that was an accident.
No, oh, no problem. I would like to introduce, all of a sudden, I forgot, I gave away the host to Mandy, also my computer started moving. But introduce Mandy Reed. Back in, on May 18th, the council unanimously voted to have the Michigan Municipal League conduct a classification and compensation study. And they have done that, and we've worked through the Human Resource Committee to get to this point, so, and I, her partner Marcia Cornell, so I'll turn it over to them. And the floor is yours, Mandy.
Oh, well, thank you very much, and thank you for allowing Marcia and I to join your meeting tonight. As Jim mentioned, my name is Mandy Reed, I'm with the Michigan Municipal League, who was asked by the Village of Vicksburg to assist in the development of a classification and compensation system. As Jim mentioned, I'm joined tonight by.
Ma- Mandy, I hate to interrupt you, one technical aspect that we have is President Adams, I do need someone to make
It would be President Frisbee.
Yeah, I know, I see that now, the approval of tonight's agenda, so if I were to entertain a motion, if anyone would dare say, do so for tonight's agenda. And Jim, that, no modifications to that agenda?
No, there's, are no modifications.
Trustee Keller, so moved.
Support, Reaster.
Keller and Reaster. And a roll, a roll call vote, trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill. Trustee Olson. Trustee Olson. And President Frisbee.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and I do apologize again, Mandy.
Nope.
President Frisbee's okay with it, the floor is back to yours.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, Mandy Reed with the Michigan Municipal League, joined here tonight with Marcia Cornell, who worked really closely with the village and completed a lot of the hands-on work for this project. I don't know if you can see her, but she's in one of these boxes on your screen here tonight. But we are here tonight to present this final report of the study that we completed. And so if it pleases council, I'm just going to jump right in, highlight our key findings, and then certainly answer any questions that you might have along the way. So full disclaimer upfront, on a project like this, this report provides detailed analysis of market data and specific suggestions and recommendations on pay system design and administration. It's important for me to highlight here that in all cases, our recommendations here are just that. It's ultimately up to you as village officials to determine the best course of action for, for your community and for your organization. We make no assumption of knowing what's best for Vicksburg. Rather, our intent is to provide this research, various scenarios and implementation options to help you in facilitating that decision-making process. Okay, so with that, we can dive right in. And so again, the Village of Vicksburg enlisted the help of the league to conduct a classification and compensation system of the five positions listed here in the middle of page one. All five of those positions underwent a thorough process of what's called job analysis. And all five positions under, or were included in the market study. And just to get some definitions out of the way, job analysis, which is the most important part of this type of project, is the process of learning as much information as we can about each of the positions, so that we're able to make accurate comparisons to the market, as well as update and create new job descriptions for each of those positions. The market study component involved creating a customized survey tool that was then sent to 15 different comparable communities listed here in table one. And of these 15 communities, we received responses directly from 14 of them. We did not receive a direct response from one community because he was dealing with some competing work priorities. But luckily, he was able to participate in the league's statewide survey a few months back. So we were able to incorporate data from that resource where it was appropriate. And then in our, our survey data that you'll see just in a few minutes here, we also incorporated data from the league's statewide database to help further validate the survey process. And when we did that, we included only those communities that were in the lower peninsula of Michigan with populations ranging from 1,000 to 7,000. And then looking at this list of comparable communities, we like to make it perfectly clear, we fully know that there is not an exact match to the Village of Vicksburg out there, nor are there exact matches to the positions that are, are employed here in Vicksburg. But the focus of our market analysis then was really to identify positions and similar organizations that require similar knowledge, skills and experience of those positions. All right, so with those key details in place, we can dive into some of our findings. So again, the job analysis process allowed us to gather a great deal of information on each of those five positions. And in doing so, we were able to create updated job descriptions for each position, and we have already sent those off to the village for review. Next, when it comes to compensation, it gets a little bit trickier here. This is why we're all here tonight, right? So it's important to note that the Village of Vicksburg currently does not utilize pay ranges, nor did most of the communities in the customized survey that we sent, in the customized market that we surveyed. And that's not uncommon to find in smaller organizations where they don't have dedicated HR expertise or compensation specialists. That's why villages or small communities often reach out to us for help and assisting with developing that for them, which is what Vicksburg is doing here today. So in instances like this, where we don't have a lot of market data as it pertains to pay ranges, we have a variety of different approaches that we can use to determine market comparability. And in collaboration with Jim and the HR committee, we used three different strategies when comparing the village's pay in comparison to the market. So if we look at tables two, three and four. Can you guys all see that all on one page?
Yep.
A lot of data. So table two summarizes the actual pay that we collected from the custom survey, the customized survey, as well as our statewide survey. And now when I refer to actual pay, I mean, there was no range minimum or range maximum, respondents only reported what their employees are currently actually making. And that's what I'm referring to as actual pay. And so here in table two, we have a list of each of the positions, what their current actual pay is. And then here for custom comps, this is an average of all of the actual pay that was reported from the 15 responding communities. Here in the statewide data column, we have the average of actual pay reported from our statewide database. And then in the comp ratio section here, this is just a simple ratio of the village's pay rate divided by either the customized data or the statewide data. And then our sample size just reflects how many respondents were in each of those data sets. And when we're looking at this and looking at the comp ratios for each position, it's important to make note that being above or below what the market shows does not automatically imply that someone is overpaid or underpaid. Rather, it's just a simple mathematical illustration to show overall comparability. Table three now uses a different approach. So again, we have the five positions that were included and what their actual pay here is. And now what we did was looking only at the actual pay reported from the customized survey. We took the spread of that and reported the lowest data point of those responses, as well as the highest data point of those responses. And then we took an average of all of the responses and listed that here in the middle. And this average here, you'll see, matches the average that you're able to. And then here, what we did is we calculated that comp ratio based on each employee's years of service in their given field. So if someone was very new to their profession, we would compare their current pay against the low data point. If someone was sort of in the middle of their career, we would compare it to the average. Or if someone has many years of experience in their field, we would compare that to the data high point to calculate this comp ratio. And then table four follows a very similar method as table three, except here, we excluded the highest and the lowest data points to remove any outliers that might have existed within that data. So same process here, we just used the second lowest data point and then the second highest high point. Okay, I know that's a lot of information thrown at you. And I think what we can do from here is actually look at a data sheet, so you'll see where those numbers came from. All right, so here is a data sheet for the position of village clerk, which I think is still a vacant position. I was trying to not pick on anyone who would be on this meeting today. So here is a data sheet with the raw data that we collected. Here on the left-hand side is the list of 15 comparable communities that we surveyed, along with the position title that they use in their community, with a summary that they reported on how their position is similar to or different than the position in Vicksburg. And then they were able to report on any pay ranges that exist, and you'll see only two out of the 15 have pay ranges. And then the actual pay that they reported for their position. Here down below, this market average in purple is a market average of all of the data up above. And having only two data points for the ranges is insufficient, it's an insufficient amount of information to be able to draw a reliable average from. So that's why it's reported as insufficient. But as far as actual pay, this 51806 is the average of all of the actual pay reported above. This first row in orange that I kind of have highlighted is that spread of the highest and lowest data point. So this 42396 is the lowest data point from up above, and the 66156 is the highest data point up above. And then the midpoint listed here of 51806 is just an average of all of this data taken together. The second orange column, again, is the second highest, the second highest data point and the second lowest low point, and then an average of all of the data points excluding the high and low point there. And then in green is the data we collected from our statewide database that I mentioned. Again, only lower peninsula communities with populations between 1,000 and 6,000, 7,000. And then in blue, we have village, the Village of Vicksburg's pay rate, and again, this is a vacant position, so there is no current pay rate in place. And for each of the five positions included in the study, there is a data sheet just like this with all of this data that we then took to summarize up here in the tables two, three and four. Are there any questions on market data so far? I know it's a lot. All right, I will keep going, but feel free to jump in when, when a question pops up. From here, we can talk briefly about benefits. So in addition to, to pay, benefits play a critical piece in total compensation too. And so our market study included a qualitative analysis of this as well. And when we looked at all of the data that we collected from those who responded to the benefit survey, we found that taken in total, Vicksburg's benefit package is very similar to the market with many benefits, but we found that it is actually more generous than market with respect to its maximum PTO accruals. And the fact that it does not require any cost sharing among employees towards insurance premiums. We did find, though, that Vicksburg is a, a little less generous with PTO accruals for those employees in years one through 14. Okay, any questions on the benefits piece? I can just keep plugging along? Perfect. So now we can talk about compensation structure. So now that we've done the job analysis and having analyzed all of the market data, we were able to prepare two different sample pay structures here for illustrative purposes. This is presented here in tables five and table six. And again, because we had an absence of pay range data, range minimums and maximums among the customized market, we have a few different approaches that we can use in setting pay structure. For example, you can use the market average of that actual pay as either the range minimum, the range midpoint, or the range maximum, depending on whatever compensation philosophy you as the officials of the village decide work best for your community. For the illustrations we've done here, we've used the market average of actual pay as the midpoint. So these midpoints here in table five reflect the market average of all data points, including the high and low data points. And then we find in the course of doing our work, that most public sector pay ranges are about 30% wide, meaning that there's a 30% spread between the range minimum to the range maximum. So here, we've got the range midpoint, again, based on market data. And then the range minimum is calculated to be 15% less than that, and then the range maximum calculated to be 15% above.
What's the second, what are the two, you've got two? Yeah, you've got, like, in, in the maximum 58,073, what's the $28.26 underneath it?
Okay, yeah, so the top number is the annual salary, the bottom number would be the hourly rate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Table six now is a similar setup, however, here we used the midpoint that, the market midpoint that excluded the high and low data points, and then calculated the 30% spread based on that. There is not a real huge significant difference between the two, but it does illustrate two different approaches and how you might go about setting your compensation structure. You'll also notice in both tables here that one position is highlighted in red. This is what we refer to as a red circled situation, which means that current pay actually exceeds the suggested range maximum. And this is not uncommon or unusual for long-serving staff or for those positions who have, you have difficulty recruiting and retaining. And in these circumstances where we have red circled situations, it's our position that we strongly caution against reducing someone's pay or otherwise penalizing an employee for, for being red circled. Rather, there are different approaches such as grandfathering that position or that employee into the compensation structure, slowing the rate of growth until the position catches up, or even doing some other progressive options that have outlined within the report as well. If there were an employee who were earning a rate less than the range minimum, we would call this a green circled position. And there are no green circled positions within this project, and that's a really good place to be. I will note, though, that there are employees who have several years of experience in their field of expertise who are earning a rate currently less than the suggested midpoint. And as an employee gains mastery and expertise in their given field, coupled with excellent and outstanding performance, it would actually be pretty reasonable to see their current pay fall between the midpoint and the maximum, rather than their pay falling between the minimum and the midpoint. So I just wanted to note that as well. Any questions on the sample pay structures here?
Hi, it's Rick Holmes. I actually just, one for you. It would seem as if 30% is a pretty healthy range for wages to be within. And although I understand the minimal point, midpoint and maximum, is there any correlation between tenure and where someone winds up on this?
Absolutely. If I understand your question correctly, yes. So as someone brand new to the position or brand new to the field enters, it would be reasonable to see their pay starting closer to the range minimum. And then as they grow in their role and gain experience and mastery, they would continue to move through the pay ranges and ultimately potentially up to the pay range maximum.
When we, when you, when we look at like the minimum column, that shouldn't be a negative, that stating that we would not want to be there, it's actually, it's, it's a healthy salary, to say the least, and then it's something then that through tenure and accomplishment, someone can grow through these, again, this 30% range that we're being shown, is that in our fair way of portraying what we're looking at?
Absolutely, and it can really be having a compensation structure in place like this can help in your recruitment efforts because they will see what their growth opportunities are for the position. Rather than if you just post a single salary, they don't know what their, what their long-term growth might be with the community.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, Mandy, Tim Frisbee, while you say that, is it only the, two of the respondents actually gave their high and low compensation range or habit established, right? From an MML standpoint, is that something that is suggested to have established?
Absolutely. We recommend that strongly.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Anything else? So as far, well, and to get to your question a little bit more, Rick, I can walk through a lot of little points here. These are just sample step systems. I don't know if this is something the village would be interested in. It's very commonly used in union environments. Or at least the traditional step system is used in a union environment. But we do find that a lot of non-union groups follow something similar to this as well. And so as I mentioned, in a traditional step system, you're moving someone through the pay ranges on a set scale. And so as they enter the profession, they start out at step one, which is the range minimum. And then over time, they move through all of these different steps up until the range maximum.
Would that be each, each step would be a year then? Is that how you would figure that?
Yeah, it can be a year. It can be however often you look at your salary. You don't even have to do full steps, you can do half steps. It's really up to you how you want to administer it. But this gives you an idea of, of what that could look like. Something that might be more in line with what you would like to see, especially for a non-union environment, is where you use that traditional approach in the early years of someone's employment. And then once they've reached that midpoint where you would expect them to have gained mastery of their role, then you go to a performance-based model where you have more flexibility to reward based on performance rather than just a, a step figure. based on performance rather than just a step figure. And then from here, we can talk a little bit, oops, that is not the right number, about system administration. A classification and compensation system, once fully designed and implemented, it is not self sustaining. It does need regular maintenance and updates in order to continue serving its purpose. And in this regard, pay adjustments are really a two step process, with the first step being a general adjustment to the pay system itself. So those pay ranges that we looked at, whatever pay ranges the village ultimately decides to go with on an annual basis, you would want to look at that and adjust that according to CPI or cost of living or whatever, what other economic indicator the village utilizes. The second step then would be employee level pay adjustments on how you approach adjusting employee pay based on your compensation philosophy for doing that. So those are the two steps there. And then even with regular maintenance, it's always recommended that a thorough study be conducted, like the one we did today or talked about today, every five to seven years. And whether that be through an outside source like the league or utilizing the league's wage and salary system, it's just a good idea to keep tabs on what the market is doing to make sure that the compensation system is still in line with the the compensation philosophy that the village sets forth. And so the data and analysis within this report and hopefully the summary I was able to provide you all today will help you all in making the important policy decisions you need. And that will ultimately provide the village manager with the tools that he needs in order to administer the system. And with that, I am happy to answer any additional questions you all may have.
Hey, Mandy, it's Rick Holmes. One last question for you. I thank you first off. Great information, and this is pretty helpful. One of the things that that we've discussed and are trying to follow, and Jim, I know I'm going to get the term wrong, but we're looking to establish, you know, standards of excellence in which to, you know, manage what we're, you know, the performance of the village as well as standards for ourselves. And this really fits into that well. I guess my, my, I'm just curious. When the MML looks across the state at possibly communities our size or what, to whatever degree you have perspective, how many really look at something like this? To what extent can you share information that gives us perspective on maybe how we match up with maybe other communities that are out there?
Are you asking how well you compare to the market in comparison to other communities?
Not necessarily wage wise, but simply the fact that we're going through this exercise to make sure that we're not only we're market competitive, but that we're, we're managing, you know, we're fiscally responsible as well. I'm just, I'm just curious how we rank against other communities out there. Are they doing this as well?
Yes, we have, the league's been offering this this service to provide classification and compensation studies for, oh goodness, well over twenty years. We have numerous clients. I myself have worked on over fifty to a hundred different communities who work on projects just like this. And oftentimes they come back every five to seven years to have us redo it for them because it is something they are that they value and want to make sure they they maintain over time. So yeah, we have a lot of communities. Some more of the smaller communities in there so we can have more range data over time, but.
That, that's the only question I have. What do you attribute the number of communities, one thousand to seven thousand? Which I think the data out of the data sets, over a hundred of those communities. Have you, you've been able to quantify why only ten of those communities would use a pay range? A salary range? I mean, that's, it's just statistically low for the amount of.
Yeah, let me. Yet again, it's forced, like I mentioned before, a lot of smaller communities just don't utilize ranges, and sometimes it even depends on the position. So for example, the manager position, the the executive leader for a community, oftentimes they don't use ranges because it's a contracted position and they go into negotiations and they just agree upon one number. For positions like village clerk or village treasurer, for example, out of fifty one responses, we had fifteen reports range data. And for treasurer, we had thirteen report range data, so it's, it's really specific on the position. Or police chief thirteen. And for superintendent, we had eighteen of about eighty five report range data. And again, that's very likely because we're, we're sampling a smaller community size, one thousand to seven thousand. And two, this is self reported data, so we can only go based on what they recorded. If they utilized ranges and they didn't report it, we just don't have that information.
Well, if I may just say something to the new trustees, the reasoning behind this effort, a lot of us seems like it's been a transition with the council. There's a lot of younger people on. A lot of us are still employed, a lot of us are in leadership roles. And we understand the difficulty, one, of recruiting and two, retaining employees. So that was the big justification for diving into this and asking of the MML to do this study for us to see how competitive we are. We've got some talented people in this organization that we don't want to leave, lose, excuse me. And that was the motivation behind it. So I just want to give some of the other new people the clarity on what happened and barring any other questions for Mandy and Marshall, we certainly appreciate it. Appreciate you putting up with the HR committee.
Oh, we love it.
Changing the way you formatted this to make it a little easier for our layman to understand. So thank you very much for the work.
You're welcome. Absolutely. And I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure working with you all as well. All of the staff who participated and even the HR committee, everyone was so thoughtful and thorough in their responses and feedback that really helps us do our job because we have good data to work with and good information to work with. So I'd just like to thank everyone here at the village for their help and helping us.
Any final questions for Ms. Reed?
Mandy, before you click out, if you can return the host to me, otherwise.
No, that would be awkward, huh?
Have to get the, have to get the.
Thanks again, Marsha, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to switch over to the golf now. So with no questions, thanks, Mandy and Marsha. I know you'll be clicking out for your next meeting.
Sure thing. You all take care.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm going to, one quick second. As I'm, we have Tom Hamm is on the phone. So Tom, and he's the six one six number listed. It's not letting me put his name there, but that's Tom Hamm from Renaissance Golf. And as you talk, Tom, do you have the ability to see the screen? I'm gonna.
I don't, Jim, no, I didn't log in. I just called in.
Well, no, that's fine. I knew that. And I'm going to, so you're aware, I have your, which we sent to the council, but for the public's view, I have your summary of the two thousand nineteen twenty golf season. So with Mr. Frisbee's permission, we'll turn it over to Tom Hamm. And as he talks, I'll move his presentation, the written form on the screen.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, Tom, the floor is yours. And if you hear me, if one of the council members has a question, raise your hand. And with Tom being on the phone, we'll get a break and be sure all the questions are answered. So go, go ahead, Tom. We have about twenty minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. As Jim mentioned, you guys, everyone should have our supplemental, I'm sorry, our summary of the nineteen twenty season. And I know it's very time sensitive. I know you have a big agenda for tonight, so I'll move quickly and and then we can review it. Probably your question and answers will be more valuable than the information that I'm just summarizing, but one of the key success factors that we've had is we've, we've been able to keep our general manager Dave Mosini and our superintendent Jason Culver. This is their, both of their second year, tenures there, and I, I know you, you know how valuable it is to keep key staff members for consistency and and improvement in your product, and they've been two valuable employees to us. As all of you know, we had an interesting start to our season and I, and when I speak season, you're unique because your fiscal year is really weird for the golf business, but I understand how, how it works for governmental. So I'll speak in terms of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, but really it's, it's twenty for us. In March, we had, and I'm not going to go into this, you all know, I know you're business owners, you, you know this just as well, if not better than I. But we had some crazy rules starting out. We didn't know if we were gonna even be playing golf. Then we didn't think we were going to be able to have golf carts. And then we had to figure out pay systems because they wouldn't allow them to the golf shop and no touch. We figured out a lot of those things very early. And we're able to capitalize on a really, you know, for as bad as the pandemic is, it really was pretty good for golf overall. One of the things that we're really proud of is that the state said, hey, you're, we may let you have golf carts, but you're only going to be able to put one in a cart. Well, that, that doesn't really work for golf facilities. You just cannot be functional enough to do that. We did create a cart separator system, sold it to the village at cost. And that allowed us to get two people in a cart right away. Keep our leagues happy and optimize the golf course. Couple of things that, that we, we really are looking at now is in the past, in the golf business, we assumed that golf outings were just, you had to have golf outings to build your revenue. It really, we couldn't do any golf outings this year. And it really opened our eyes to closing down your facility for six hours for a hundred players. And I know a lot of this has got to do with supply and demand, but a lot of us are relooking at the value of doing a lot of golf outings. I'm not saying eliminate all golf outings, but trying to focus on them as a, as a really good source of revenue is probably been turned on its head a little bit with the, with the experiences that we've had this year. For food and beverage, I know some of you are involved with restaurants, so I won't even go into that. It's been, it's been very difficult. We did react to that. And I, I think our numbers will look pretty favorable. But it is a challenge. We'd love to be able to get back into having people in the clubhouse and enjoying, you know, burgers and beers when they get done playing league or even open play. We're just going to see how it shakes out. We're pretty optimistic, as I'm sure everyone else is for next year. Our financial review. I do have a summary on there. I'm not going to get into it too deeply, but we did exceed our projections. And there's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of financial, good financial information that came out of the pandemic here. Most, if not all, facilities in Michigan did benefit from the situation. We, we benefited more than most. And I think that's a combination of some things, but your numbers are, we're really pleased with those. Now, I will tell you that half of that number, you know, your net income number is based on some help that we were able to grant into the PPP fund, and I'm sure a lot of you people know about the PPP. We were able to, any, any money that we got for PPP and associate, that was associated to angels, we reimbursed you for that. So in other words, we didn't charge, the PPP we got, we eliminated that labor cost to the village or Angels Crossing. We didn't take that money as a lot of business did and just put it in our pocket. We shared it with the partners that, that that we have, that we're working with. And I say share, you got a hundred percent of the money. So our numbers are fantastic, but they are aided in, in some of that information. The information that I provided you with payroll doesn't account for the PPP money. That's just what it was, just to give you a comparison of, you know, where we're at last year to this year and and in two thousand nineteen. I should say the payroll, too, was influenced a little bit. Remember, we only were able to get eight weeks of PPP money. So there is, there, you know, there is money going forward that we had to spend, but our outside customer service is generally paid based on a tipable wage. And dealing with carts, so you have to have carts and our logistics for the clubhouse are not optimal, so that, you know, carts have got to be brought up and there's labor there. And we had to pay those folks minimum wage. There was no tipping. You couldn't handle bags. You know, blah, blah, blah. So. Yeah, was someone, did someone have a question? I'm sorry.
I do not see any hand raised, so go ahead, Tom. We have about thirteen minutes.
Okay. The equipment, we always, well, always, I've done a couple of these, but normally this is the time that I, I kind of engage the council and tell them what we're, what we would like to get for course improvement. I know Mr. Mallory is going to discuss golf carts, so I won't cover that, but there that is an essential service that I think will allow us to get more money for our daily fee and certainly enhance the member experience and guest experience. The main information I have is on a rough mower. We purchased two of these Tri-Max Snake rough mowers, which are state of the art. They're fantastic. We've been able to la, lower our labor costs for rough mowing about thirty percent at Lake Michigan Hills, which has one of these units. I bought additional unit for a course that I knew was going to stop operating after this year for development and tagged it for Angels Crossing. So the information that you have in front of you is based on that unit, but we're, I'm, I'm not obligating the village. I'm just saying this is a really good deal. I hope that we can take advantage of it. It'll, it'll improve our operations in many ways. I have put a link to a YouTube video that's on this piece of equipment. If you're interested, I would, I would encourage you to, to take a look at it. There really, it's a really nice piece of equipment and we have more rough than usually two golf courses have at Angels Crossing. As you know, that's a beautiful piece of property, but it's very big. And this would help us accomplish some of our goals that we've set in the past and future. I won't go over any of the course improvements. We, we did those. We're hoping that we can continue on the waste clearing and increasing these vistas of this beautiful piece of property that you have that has been overgrown. We were able to accomplish a lot of that last winter. And I, I know that we've gotten so many good positive responses. It feels like a, it feels like a better golf course just visually and and perceptions, as you well know, have a lot to do with. You know, what you're able to charge and the experience to customers. So the other projects that we do that we had, we have these on, we had these on schedule, but then COVID kind of stopped. Uh, we had these on schedule, but then COVID kind of stopped us. Uh, we are in the process of finishing the short game practice area over on the range. And our number one complaint there at Angels is the practice green. Um, it it really does not represent Angels Crossing as a whole and the and the golf course. We think we can do that for a relatively low cost. It's just irrigation. We got to do some contouring and and some sand, some seed. Uh, and I and and I think you're almost complete at that point. Um, so that's what we have uh on plan. We did remove the trees. We were getting ready to roll like usual, but. Then uh, you know, March hit and uh, we had to change some. Some of our thinking and uh, didn't have the availability of some of the things that we really needed to uh have for those projects. Um, on a positive note, and I'm sure, or I'm hoping that the council can uh has gotten some of these. Uh, reviews. I I've had many of the members that have been there from day one that are just saying that. The conditioning and the greens conditions uh are better than they have ever been. And um, that's what we've been looking for. We told you it would take two to three years. Uh, we've we've had control of the maintenance for two years, so I I feel like we're really on pace. And uh, and I think next year you'll see that the golf course will be, it's good. It's it's really good now. Uh, people think it's fantastic, but next year it'll be fantastic. We're we're uh according, you know, with our standards. And I I think you'll be increasingly pleased. Uh, with that, does that run through? I I know I want to save some some questions uh for you. Um, you know, as always, we we always thank the village and the council and. Mr. Ma- Mallory and Michelle Morgan, they've done a great job supporting us. And uh, we feel very fortunate being involved with you folks. With that, I'll uh. I'll answer some questions.
Sure. And with Tom on the phone, if uh, Tim, you wanna uh just uh see if council raises their hands and then you introduce them to Tom.
Yeah, I don't see anybody's hands going up. If anybody has any questions, uh, I certainly would like to uh thank Tom. You know, four years ago, when we went into this, I never saw this as a money-making venture for the for the village, and I I really don't. Still see it as an income statement for the organization, for the community. But it sure is nice that you've turned it around. Uh, congratulations on on it. You know, I I asked you for a budget many years ago and. And it's been hit or miss, but uh, the numbers speak for themselves. The the discussion and the community uh involvement and and what everything has been said about the place is phenomenal. So. You know, it's a team effort. It was a good choice bringing your group on Renaissance. We really appreciate what you've done for the community.
Uh, Tim, I don't know, because I'm the host, but uh, Rick uh put a hand up electronically and Denny did as well. But it might be the, and Ryan Wagner has put a hand up too.
Well, I don't see the hands on here.
I see Ryan's.
It usually shows up in the left-hand corner.
Well, we'll start with Ryan. Feel free.
Uh, yeah, Tom, so in reference to the uh PPP and transferring those funds over, is that because Renaissance directly. Employed the individuals that received the hours for the PPP funding, not that the village applied for it directly?
That's correct. Yeah, so um, you had a payroll company doing this a couple of years ago and we. We jumped in and I I know we've done a better job than they have. Um, I don't know that that payroll company would have ever reimbursed you, but um. Yeah, so we do that and then we handle the the management too. So we have all of the payroll. They're in two separate corporations. Um, but yes, that, yeah, that's a long answer for yes.
Thank you, Tom.
You bet.
Mr. Holmes, did you have a question?
I did. Um, Tom, I had a chance to walk the golf course this weekend and. Look at some of the the things that you've identified in this report and uh. It does look nice. Greens are dressed, traps look better. Waste areas have been managed where in years past they haven't. So it's obvious that there's an effort to to make the course look better. Also, if you look at the financials. There's not many that can say in the middle of a global pandemic that you're actually able to have record profitability. Uh, which to your point speaks to the volume of people going to great lengths to try to find entertainment. Especially in in the age we live in. I know it's hard to to say that, you know, based on this year, what the future looks like. Just curious from your perspective and being in the industry, what what are the trends right now in golf as far as rounds of play? Is it? Um, is it flat? Is it increasing incrementally? I'm just curious. You know, where your head is at on that issue?
Yeah, so um, yes, they are. All of our facilities and and. Uh, most of the courses in Michigan and throughout the United States. Have shown significant improvement. Actually, some courses that we're probably. Gonna, you know, tap out, which again, we always encourage that. We 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 still feel there's an over. Oversupply, but um, they've had such promising years that they're probably going to get it out for another year or two. Um. We honestly, when we do our budgets and and um, you will get a, you you will get that. I I'll give that to Mr. Mallory and you guys can go over what we put down as uh budget numbers, but. I am taking a normal year. And I am adding 20%. This is for revenues. I'm adding 20% because I I'm hoping that it's more, but I think that's a reasonable retention rate. I mean, I'm assuming. That we're going to be able to return to softball and bowling and, you know, all the other activities that. Uh, that you could do before uh the COVID. And I I'm very optimistic that we can at least retain 20% of our gains. Um, that being said, uh, you know, I don't look at your your graph there. Through your sec- or your first half of the season, because again, you're on that weird fiscal. We're up just in green fees, cart fees and range. We're up 130 grand in revenues. Um, so I know 20, 2021, I guess, would be your next fiscal will be promising. Um, but we're going to know the first half of of this, well, 2021. Um, how this is going to take shape. Again, I'm planning on 20, 20% improvement, just seeing, thinking that we can retain about 20% of the golfers. That came out because they didn't have anything else to do. Uh, I'm hoping that stuck and and they're going to enjoy themselves and continue to play. Uh, so. Optimistic, we've always done well, even when things were not bad. We've been able to get our facilities profitable. Not to the profitability of 20 years ago, but profitable, able to pay your bills and put a little something away.
Thank you, Tom.
And Danny, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Um, Tom, great. Um, thanks for the great work you're doing. Your new piece of equipment. I love it. I want one. I'm jealous. Um, I saw something in the budget. It kind of caught my eye. It was about a GPS system for the golf golf carts. What exactly is that for? Or am I misreading that?
Yeah, I'll let Tom support what what I'm going to say, Tom. I'm just gonna, we're gonna, uh, I have that on the village manager's report. Um, so we'll go in detail there, but Tom can give you specifics how that will add value to the course to the golfer. So looking for that from you, Tom, in about two, two and a half minutes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You now have two minutes and 15 seconds uh to highlight what GPS does.
Okay, GPS uh greatly enhances the customer experience. Um, you don't have to use your yardage, you know, your view, you know, your viewfinder. It'll tell you yardages. The hole is on a monitor on the front of the golf cart. There's advertising opportunities for some of the, I mean, I'm I'm assuming we would utilize that for some of the village businesses. In addition, what is the, one of the major things for us is there's cart control. In other words. We have trouble getting angels to the conditions that we need to get because no one. There has been educated or prefers to ignore the cart rules and we get carts up on tees and greens. And you can program uh carts to only go for nine holes. Um, we have a lot of that because of the proximity and control. Where players will play for nine and they just think that they can keep going. Now, we we catch a lot of them. Um, but the cart wouldn't let them go over there. It'll just say, hey, turn around. I only paid for nine holes. It's food and beverage. They can order food and beverage. Um, the pace of play, it gives them, you know, here's where you're at. You need to pick it up. Uh, it it really is the next level customer experience. Um, and and of of golf courses, like Harbor Shores has it. Uh, the better places have the GPS, not cheap. Uh, but it really enhances the customer experience.
I guess my question would be is if somebody said to take one of these things for a joyride, are we going to be able to find it?
They won't, they won't be able to leave the property. The cart shuts down.
Cool. All right. That's that's what my question was about.
Well, we're gonna have to cut it, wrap it up. We got a meeting coming up in a minute. We're gonna have to get off and jump on a different web. Put a link to that. Tom, thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your efforts out there. Things are looking good.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
All right. Well, I'll uh go ahead and.